Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Agenda setting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. It's 9:01 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier. The Commissioners, Mahia and Klaus on Zoom. Commissioner Edwards will be joining us shortly. Public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're in session until noon with the break about 10:25-ish midway through. And start off with review of this afternoon's agenda for the 2 p.m. meeting. That meeting will be called to order at 2:00 with a Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like Commissioner Edwards' approval of agenda, opportunity for public to address for County Manager's update. Anything on the preliminary items, County Manager? Okay. Consent items, we have items 3A through 3I, and 3A is an auditor item, resolution to increase existing change fund.
Yes, as we discussed last week, this item makes a small increase in the amount of petty cash available to the auditor to be able to create separate tills for employees working in licensing and recording division, and separate tills as a best practice in a county.
Questions for County Manager on item 3A. Hearing none, we'll look at 3B, Emergency Services, Night Vision Binocular System and Basic Accessory Kits for Thurston County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, this item, B and C actually are joined, if you will. They are both purchasing night vision binoculars for SWAT units. Item B, purchase them for Thurston County Sheriff's Office. Item C is a purchase for the Aberdeen Police Department. Both these items are using Homeland Security Region 3 funding, which is a federal Homeland Security Grant Award. They are both going through Board of County Commissioners because Thurston County serves as the fiduciary agent for Region 3, which is composed of many jurisdictions. And the purchase is through a cooperative purchasing contract. And I'm looking, I think Kyle is here, if you have additional questions.
Questions for Kyle on items 3B or 3C?
None for me.
No questions.
Okay, not seeing anything. You, Kyle. Let's go to 3D then. That's a Commissioner's Office item, resolution reclassifying a position.
This item is a request to reclass a position in the Commissioner's Office. The position that we're requesting to reclass is a Public Information Supervisor. That would become a Senior Program Manager. This recognizes increased responsibilities due to the end of the county's contract with TC Media. This position is now responsible for all media streaming, all of our meetings, as well as countywide support and oversight of communications, and increased number of staff that the position supervises. The top of the range increases from $8,471 to $9,757. That is a top-of-the-range increase of $1,286. That will not, the entire amount will not be given. However, any increase can be absorbed by the office. The Board had a robust conversation last week regarding reclassifications in general. As you'll see when we review your planning session agenda, that is an item of conversation for next Tuesday. I would say that for this position, Anne Maria Check, this is one of three positions, only three reclassifications that the Board has been asked to consider since the budget was passed. Each of those had impact on workload that resulted in the incumbent working out of class. So this is not tied to the competent class. This would not affect other positions and is somewhat unique in circumstances. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
I think we had a great discussion about it last time, but I am curious. You know, being that I'm new and I don't know a lot of things, when somebody works out of class, do they get any compensation for working out of class? Or is it just like, you're doing this and hopefully it pays off, or it's a temporary thing? How does it work?
So there is an option in Thurston County Personnel Rules. If there is a plan for someone to work out of class for a short period of time, the County Manager can approve a temporary pay increase. And we have a lot of them going right now in the county. But that's for something that you planned that's supposed to be temporary in nature. Like if someone's filling in, "I have a temporary pay increase right now because I'm doing the duties of the County Manager."
And it's official, it was planned out?
That's right. There's a document, it got approved, it's going to end. So the, when someone is routinely working out of class, let's say you have an office assistant, their work has resolved or evolved. They're taking on more responsibilities of a higher nature. And a desk audit shows that they are working out of class on a regular basis, and that is not expected to end. The first thing that should happen is the manager needs to manage the position. But we also need to look at what are the business needs of the office? And if the work at the higher level will continue, or a lower level, it could be a decrease. But usually we see increases, then a reclassification is in order, and the higher pay will start at the point that the Board approves the reclass.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from Board members? Hearing none, I'm going to ask this item be removed from consent.
Okay.
Because I intend to abstain from the vote on it. As I said before, I think this should be approved, but I have a timing concern. I think it should have been a budget request, or an emergency case should be made, or it should be deferred until after next week's conversation. So just on that basis, I'd like to abstain, so if we can have this a department item.
All right.
Okay, next up is Human Resources item, resolution creating classifications and positions in Thurston County Pay Plans.
So these positions were approved in the budget. However, the county did not have a classification established for the positions. Basically, what the Board approved was an FTE and the title. HR has worked with the offices and departments to develop the classifications. They are now requesting that the Board approve those classifications and establish the positions now that the classifications have been set. So you approved the funding and the title, and now we're asking that you approve the job class and the position that goes with it.
Questions on 3E? Nope. Okay, 3F is Public Health and Social Services, Appointments to Regional Housing Council's Advisory Boards.
All right, this item is an appointment to the subcommittees, if you will, of the Regional Housing Council. The Regional Housing Council has two subcommittees, both advisory committees to the council. The council has selected and recommends to the Board of County Commissioners these applicants. And I think that we have Alex. Alex is on the screen. She can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Alex regarding the appointments? Talked about this last week, a little bit. Okay, thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Next up is Appointments to the Fair Board.
Yes, this item is to appoint Colton Nash, Mally Pullen, and Trinity Short to the Fair Board as youth-at-large members. We've been seeking three youth to serve on the Fair Board, and these three individuals have applied and are eager to do so. So we recommend to the Board these three.
Questions on these Fair Board appointments? Nope. Okay, next is a voucher list, item 3H, $3,337,000, et cetera, for the week of March 4th.
Yes, items G and H are the voucher lists for the Board to approve. On item, let's see, item H has no tenant improvements in the atrium. And item I, the items for the atrium are routine, ongoing costs.
Voucher questions on page or I?
No question.
Okay, the first apartment item up is County Planning and Economic Development. Item 4A, ordinance for A-25 Forest Lands Conversion Code update.
Yes, as you have heard on many occasions, the ordinance for the A-25 Forest Land Conversion Code update makes changes to Thurston County code regarding forest land conversion and tree protection standards. The development of these codes has been a long process. It involved broad community stakeholder input. The Planning Commission held two work sessions in a public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners held two work sessions. A public hearing was held by the Board on February 6th, and then a follow-up work session was held on February 26th. The code before you reflects all requested changes, and we have staff here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for the C-page folks on Forest Land Conversion? He just wore us down. We're done.
Got it.
Good job.
Appreciate it. All right, and then you're adding 4B from the, is that where we're thinking? You want to move 3D to 4B? Wherever it goes.
Where would you want it?
Click of the board can magically sort it into the, there's some kind of, is it alphabetical?
So it might become the new 4.
Oh. Okay, 5A is Contract Award for Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan Update.
This item is to execute a contract. An RFP was issued searching for a consultant who would assist the county by updating the hazardous solid waste management plan. That plan was last updated in 2014. One bid was received in response to the RFP, and the Board of County Commissioners on February 6 authorized negotiation of the contract. That negotiation has been completed, and staff now request authorization to execute the contract. The contract will be paid 75% by a grant from the Department of Ecology. The remaining 25% match will be paid with county tipping fees. And it looks like we have, yep, Kimberly is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Kimberly? 5A, seeing none, good. Okay, we'll go to 5B, Contract for Trillium Housing Services.
So this is the contract that we were talking about yesterday, last week and yesterday. This is a project, the Lansdale Point Project, that will create 162 units of affordable housing. It will be available for people who earn below 60% of the area's median income. The project will be a mix of 1, 2, 3, and 4-bedroom apartments, so available to both single individuals and families. The total cost of the project is roughly $53 million, and the county is only funding a small portion of that. The Regional Housing Council has recommended funding of $2,650,000. We had planned to use half County Home Fund and half Olympia Home Fund for this project, but we now recommend that we use $2,650,000 of ARPA funding. This project is ready to go, and we know that it will be able to spend the ARPA funds in a timely manner. And then we would reserve the $2,650,000 for Franz Anderson. So I see Tom is on the screen. We'll have to somewhat amend the contract that had been before you. And Tom, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to do that yet or not.
Not yet. So we will be adding the ARPA, the same basic contract applies. We will need to add the ARPA requirements as an attachment to the contract.
Right, but this contractor has indicated that they are able and willing to accept ARPA funding.
Yes.
Yep.
I missed the conversation yesterday, but what happened to Olympia's part of the funding?
The $1,325,000 in Olympia Home Fund, that will be held along with the $1.3 million from the county for Franz Anderson. The entire 2.6 will be held for Franz Anderson of home funding. So it's basically a funding swap.
Pull their funding out, and now we're funding everything.
I contacted the city, and they're perfectly willing to do the funding swap.
It's timing if to get the ARPA funds locked in.
And that still leaves like a million in ARPA funds that were obligated for that Franz Anderson project that now we have to decide something else to do with?
So we have another project in mind, Tom. Could you remind us what project that is, please?
Yeah, so the other one is, the Housing Authority has a project in Tumwater, Colts Lake Way North. It's a senior housing project. So a balance of around $850,000 of the ARPA funds would go to that project, and so that's the other switch. But all three projects, the Housing Authority project, the Franz Anderson project, and Southport will maintain the funding levels as originally intended. It's just really the sources of funds that we're shifting around a little bit for timing purposes.
Okay, and this is a privately owned project, correct?
The...
It's a private developer, but it's funded with these funds as well as 4% low-income housing tax credit. So it's got a mix of federal and government funding in it, but it is a privately owned property by a...
And then because of that funding, there's guarantees that this remains low-income in perpetuity?
Yeah, for our funding, it will be for 20 years, so we put lien documents. And then the state also includes lien documents. Theirs go up to 40 years for affordability.
So 40 to 50 years.
Commissioner Mahia?
I just wanted to add that Southport has done other projects here in Thurston County as well. So this is not their first project. In terms of...
All right, well, we went through that a lot yesterday as well, so if there's no further questions there, we'll go to Public Works. 6A, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Furnishing a Supply of Various Asphalt Materials.
So each year, just ahead of construction season, Public Works establishes a vendor list for various materials that they will need for road and other types of work that they do. So this item authorizes an RFP to call for bids for the various types of materials that they require. Moment on the screen to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mike on 6A? Don't see any. Good, thanks, Mike. 6B is Resolution Granting a Non-Exclusive Franchise to Public Utility District Number 1 of Thurston County for a water system within Thurston County right of way.
This item is a continuation of a franchise that the county currently has in agreement with the Public Utility District Number 1 in Thurston County. The PUD has a water system that in part is operated on Thurston County right of way. And this continues the authorization for 10 years for the PUD to operate their water system.
Here, if you have any questions.
Do we have a public hearing on this?
We do have a public hearing.
Why didn't we take action at that point in time? Not sure. Okay, so we get to hear about three more times. I can tell you that this is a very, this is a very non-controversial franchise agreement. This has been extended numerous times. Thurston PUD has been around for a very long time. We have an extremely good cooperative agreement with PUD. Okay, doesn't look like there's any questions. Thank you. We'll go to 6C, Execute License and Indemnity Agreement for a Private Power Line.
This item is a, this establishes a license and indemnity agreement with a private citizen who is going to establish a power line that runs under Zangle Road. Thurston County code requires this type of indemnity agreement where the private individual accepts responsibility, and this protects the county from any future risk involved with the power line.
Questions on this one?
I'm just looking up where Zangle Road is.
It's on the way to Boston Harbor?
Correct, yep. Yeah, this portion's up north of Boston Harbor, but yeah, it takes off.
Takes off off the, yeah, it's the road that heads up there, yeah. Okay, so we're good, Todd?
All right, thank you.
Let's see, Park Foundation Memorandum of Agreement.
See, Karen is here, if you have questions. This is the memorandum of agreement with the Thurston County Park Foundation. This is the memorandum of agreement with the Thurston County Park Foundation. The county uh, is going to be working together with Park um, seeking opportunities um, to raise funds that will support the county's park and trail system. At the board's request, we've added a clause um, that will enable the county to also work with the foundation on um, arts and culture projects as they are identified um, by the county. So uh, we believe that this agreement is ready for your approval.
Park Foundation, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
What fund is this gonna be paid out of? I don't, and I don't see a dollar on it.
General fund.
And does it?
General fund.
Could it be paid out of park uh?
Impact fees?
Impact fees or conservation fees or any other fee that it might ultimately benefit?
So it cannot be paid out of park impact fees, we cannot use impact fees for M and O. Uh, conservation futures doesn't count because it's M and O and we've maxed out M and O in conservation futures, which must be used specifically for a park that was at least in part paid for out of conservation futures, so that fund would not be appropriate. Um, we do support our parks with general fund money, so this is just one more general fund item uh, in support of our parks. And Karen, is the dollar amount, I can't remember, is it ten or?
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars this year.
Twenty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Park and Memorandum of Agreement? Okay. Six E, Public Works Tilly Campus Conference Rooms Technology Equipment Upgrades.
This is the approval of a contract with Desco uh, Audio Visual uh, for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to upgrade the AV equipment in Public Works Conference Rooms. The conference room equipment is badly out of date and in some cases does not operate as needed. And so this replaces that equipment. Um, and it will be paid with the various Public Works Funds.
Questions? Nope. Uh, that's the end of the business agenda, we have standing items. And then we will have a public hearing at three thirty. We also have a Transportation Benefit District meeting at three thirty, so we'll manage that. With the public hearing first?
Yep, do the public hearing first should be very fast.
Okay, the public hearing is related to uh, telecommunications franchise agreement with Michelle Telecom Inc.
Right, this item is uh, an extension of an existing franchise that the county has with Michelle Telcom. Uh, this enables um, Michelle to have uh, telecom equipment, mainly fiber optic lines in the county's uh, rights of way. State law requires a public hearing on franchise agreements. Um, this item has been reviewed and actually um, designed, if you will, by the um, prosecuting attorney's office and also by Ken Felman, the county's contract attorney who is a specialist, a national specialist in telecommunications law.
Chair, uh, I don't have any concern about that, I just wonder if, I couldn't go back to three D real quick to clarify a point that was made.
Yes, sir.
When someone is working out of class, they're paid and compensated from what you said about the assistant manager's position. So is this person currently being uh, compensated in that same fashion?
TPI, no, they are not.
And why?
Um, because, but you know, I really can't speak for the prior county manager, I don't know why he did not authorize the TPI, I would say, and, and I also don't know why he did not put this forth in the budget. Um, however, I will say that when I was made aware, um, one of the things that changed at the end of last year is that we ended our contract with TC Media and the board added two FTEs um, to this person's um, unit that they supervise. So there was definitely a change at the end of last year uh, in their um, expectations and workload. And rather than do a temporary pay increase for something that is an ongoing issue, temporary pay increases are supposed to be just that, temporary. Tem, the emphasis on temporary. The change in the workload for this position is permanent. Um, so if you're comparing this position, which has an ongoing change with, say, my circumstance, which is temporary, I'm not the county manager, I'm going to be going back to my regular duties and that temporary pay increase will end. Um, but this is a permanent change.
Okay, and it just kind of evolved? And that sometimes, like, it happens by design and sometimes it evolves. And when it evolves, then the system has that kind of failsafe, where it's like, hey, let's check it out.
Reclass, yep.
Is that? Okay.
Okay, let's just hop back to the public hearing, any questions on the telecommunications public hearing proposed?
Should be very short.
There, then I'll pass baton to the president of the Transportation Benefit District.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at three thirty or soon after we're done with the public hearing or with the Board of County Commissioners' agenda. Uh, there will be the approval of the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four agenda, and then the approval of the meeting minutes for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on that? Okay, there will be an opportunity for the public to address the board and then we'll move on to department items. Item three A is to ratify the assignment of the Thurston County Transportation Benefit District Officers for twenty twenty-four.
This is you.
Can we review those assignments?
Yes. The president, I was waiting for her to.
No, go ahead, Jennifer.
Jennifer Walker, uh, Public Works Director. Uh, three A, the president is Commissioner Mejia and the vice president is Commissioner Klaus. Three B, so we have six department items total for the meeting. Uh, three B is updating the charter, so this is a, um, a resolution to amend it to reach out to the five-member board now. C is a resolution to amend the bylaws again, to adjust for a five-member board.
Uh, Jennifer, can I ask if there's any questions for item three B? Okay, not seeing any, we can move on to item three C, which is the resolution amending the Thurston County Transportation Benefit District, go ahead.
This is to um, amend the bylaws for the five-member board adjustment?
I guess uh, I didn't really worry too much about this because it was expressed that it was simply to reflect the five member, like, there was nothing else. But I haven't actually seen the, the new charter, or is that something I can get?
Yes, they're all posted, um.
Just go online and track it down.
Okay.
Bylaws, did those two, just so I can see them before we formally.
Yes, they're. And then I believe that the last year's meeting minutes that you'll be asked to approve were, Marcy emailed those to you on March eleventh.
It's where your packet last week. We heard of our review last week.
Okay. All of the items?
Uh, I know that the minutes in particular, but I thought we saw the charter last week.
Yes, it's in, it's in the packet. Charter, bylaws, annual report.
So any questions on the bylaws at this time?
I'm not seeing any more, we'll move on to item three D, which is the resolution amending the Thurston County Transportation Benefit District meeting schedule.
So this schedule, um, it changes, the, the resolution changes the location, still keeps it at monthly. Uh, but as was discussed previously, I think Commissioner Edwards had a question about this. When there's not an agenda item, my, I reach out to the president of the board and make a recommendation to cancel the meeting.
It, it seems like that was supposed to be quarterly, not monthly.
It's been monthly, it gives the flexibility to the board, um.
It has been monthly?
The resolution, the existing schedule has been monthly, and so we're just changing the location. And as I said, if there's not items to discuss, I'm generally reaching out to the president and making a recommendation to cancel.
Seems like a lot of extra work that, unless there's something up, I guess.
It really, it really isn't, um, yeah, last year we just uh, went ahead and coordinated and um, you know, agreed to kind of cancel the rest of, of the meetings for the rest of the year. We only had, I believe it was one meeting last year?
Correct.
So it's, it's pretty straightforward, um, and.
There may be more discussion this year.
There may be more discussion and I'm hoping for more discussion this year. Okay, any additional questions on that item? Okay, and we'll move on to item three E, which is the twenty twenty-three Thurston County Transportation Benefit District Annual Report.
So we will present the twenty twenty-three annual report, which is uh, an actual requirement and ask the board to accept that, that report.
Any questions? Okay, item three F is the overview of the Thurston County Transportation Benefit District Funding Options and Next Steps.
So this is no action required of the board, but it is informational. We will lay out again the, the purpose of the Transportation Benefit District. What are the, what is the work that can be done and what are the funding options um, available for a Transportation Benefit District? I think Nicole has already reviewed a couple of times with the board, the, the revenue. Um, so we'll just restate that again for the board.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, and so then we'll, that'll be the end of our agenda. Um, and so we'll hopefully adjourn, so I'll hand the baton back to the chair of the board.
All right, thank you. This takes us to item three, which is Proclamations and Awards. We have our proclamation list packet. And it looks like mixed up. We have three proposed board proclamations for April. None today, but April second, we'll have two Child Abuse Awareness Month and Volunteer Appreciation Month. We're gonna hit the clerk of the board.
Yes, we have draft proclamations for those, um, and uh, but we have no further updates at this time.
Commissioner Klaus, you had a question about a proclamation, was the trans day?
I think that was for Board of Health, but I can speak to it if you.
We're gonna have, I know we were gonna invite folks and give them a second, that was Board of Health, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so on this one, we're, are we looking at having guests appear from the community on either of these?
Yes, uh, Public Health and Social Services is coordinating the um, Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation and for the Volunteer Appreciation Month proclamation. Um, it, it's up to you, I uh, have a few external groups that we've reached out to in the past. Um, and we can also invite our board and commission volunteer members.
Are these volunteers for county activities or are these like, kind of a more volunteers to do anything in the community?
So the proclamation uh, itself kind of starts wide and narrows down to the volunteers of Thurston County.
Okay.
So whichever direction you'd like to begin.
Might I suggest we contact that Monarch?
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe they bring their dogs?
Yep.
Their dogs.
Okay.
So um, for the Child Abuse Proclamation, Monarch is attending as well as Dr. Gilbert from Providence and many other partners from Partners Children and Families.
Are they bringing their dogs?
I'm not sure.
Okay, and then our Volunteer Appreciation Month, you, you said reaching out to certain, is that going out blanket to committee volunteers or are you, are you targeting, I didn't quite understand?
I, well, it's at your discretion, we can distribute that to the staff contacts of each board and commission, we can distribute it to their members.
So it's a broad invitation, unless you have someone in particular you'd like to invite?
No, but I, yeah, I was just, if it's gonna go to certain committees, it'd be nice. Invite all the committees, I mean, to the extent we can. Yeah.
She gonna uh, send it out to the staff, the staff, all of the various?
Yeah, cause I, I rationale for picking one or another.
It would be cool to come with like a Volunteer of the Year Award for the county. Maybe future years, that does the most volunteering for the county, it could be an opportunity to recognize them.
We haven't, didn't.
No, please, go ahead.
I was just thinking that, I think we had, I was sort of changing topic, we were sort of, didn't we focus on COVID response, like, one of the, one of the last couple?
We did. We did, big celebration of the, after COVID, cause people donated many, many hours.
People that hadn't been involved before.
Yeah, um, all of our sectors have so many volunteers, the, um, we've brought street team in in the past. We've brought uh, emergency, uh, we've brought in the uh, medical volunteers. Um, the, there's, and then all of our various, just thinking about how many hours our planning commissioners donate to the county is phenomenal. So we're gonna reach out to all of them and invite them to come and be recognized.
I guess, is there value though to, you know, cause like, if you do that, you might get one from here and one from there and one from there and that's, that's cool, I mean, they're all welcome, but is there a value to kind of highlighting one? Just cause then you can give a little information, have a little educational component, like you said, street team, we've done vax, public health, vaccination clinics, we could do planning commission, I mean, I don't know, I was trying to think of like, how to, rather than just gathering some random, cause it's probably gonna be, I'm guessing, a person here, a person there, who has the time and, and energy to show up and be recognized and that might be kind of disorganized versus having a, a group that wants to come with maybe four or five people and speak about what they do as an example. I don't know, it's just a thought. But I don't know exactly what group that would be.
We don't want to exclude anyone, but I mean, it's, yeah.
Just to kind of have that, otherwise there might not be a coherent message to, other than thank you. I don't know, maybe we'll think about that, yep. We've got two, we've got a couple of weeks here. Okay, anything else we need to cover on?
No.
Proclamation, same, okay. Proclamation issue. Next up would be advisory boards and commissions.
Thank you, I have uh, two committees to address, uh, the first being BOE. Yesterday, I received the Board of Equalization recommendations, that was distributed late yesterday afternoon. To recap, there are two vacancies, one. To recap, there are two vacancies, one for a regular member and one for an alternate member. And two term expirations, also one for a regular member and one for an alternate member. The BOE recommends that current alternate member, John Graver, be appointed to the vacant regular member seat, vacating his alternate seat, and recommends that Ron Jermoe and David Savedra to be appointed to the now two vacant alternate seats. With these, that only leaves Dan Pus' term expiration. And it's my understanding the BOE is hoping to fill out the board a little to have folks to review her application for reappointment. Lastly, Ruth, clerk of the BOE, provided the application that was submitted a few months ago from Jeff Merriman and confirmed that he was included in their review process.
Good. But at this point, there's three recommendations, and that's for Ron Jermoe, John Graver, and David Savedra. That's it. Okay.
I'm sorry, I could barely hear, he was or he wasn't?
Yes, he was.
Okay, thank you.
Ted May, a prior county assessor employee, was he, we approved him last meeting of all being an alternate?
He's up in the packet.
He's a current alternate member who applied for the vacant regular member seat. He will continue, correct.
Okay, he stays alternate.
Yes.
Okay, well, does the board want to make some decision or take more time? Good to follow the recommendations of the, okay, I have three thumbs for that, Commissioner Leah.
I'm good with moving forward.
Sounds like everybody's good with the recommendations of the committee.
Thank you. I'll add these to today's agenda.
Thank you.
And next, we received two resignations from the Rachel Equity Council within the last week. EV has additional information, so we are working to schedule a work session for the near future. They're sharing that for informational.
Do they, do we have, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we have like letters of resignation to review or anything like that?
I've received one email resignation that I can distribute and waiting to receive the, the second one.
Thank you.
Who are the members?
I have the name of one resignation, and that is Tony Draper.
Are there exit interviews conducted or anything like that?
So it's my understanding that these two have resigned because they did not take the OPMA training. All members were, were asked to take the OPMA training in accordance with state law. Many have not, and when prompted to please complete the OPMA training, we received two resignations. There's more going on with the Rachel Equity Council, and so we are setting up a work session for EV to come and discuss with the board what the current concern is.
Thank you. There's nothing for us to decide at the moment.
So let's kind of go.
Yes, thank you.
Let's see. Looks like we can move on then. Uh, next up is, yeah, check that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Porter, Public Information Supervisor. Just a quick update on the Friday Five, so thank you to those who have shared it on their social media pages. Last weekend alone, we got thirty-two new subscribers, so that's great. Currently, we have just over eleven hundred subscribers with an open rate of fifty percent, which the industry average is thirty-eight percent. So the people who are receiving it are, for the most part, opening it and looking at it. So if you continue to share, that would be excellent. Pending any questions, that's what I have.
Questions for Megan?
No question.
Okay, we just dropped down those numbers. Then we go to Commissioner, item six, one, planning session agenda for March twenty-sixth. Do you want us to go through this like piece by piece? Is that the idea?
Well, I can just walk down the list.
I'll turn it over to you.
So that you're aware of what we're planning for next Tuesday. The bulk of the day will be spent on personnel topics. As you know, the sheriff deputy and correction deputy contracts will open this year. So your labor negotiators are looking for guidance. And that will be in an executive session. Mainly, the conversation will be regarding compensation. But there are other items in the sheriff's office that will be options for the board to consider. All of these items will be in the executive session. But there are things on the table right now regarding some positions that the board has approved and how we resolve union concerns about those. And then the sheriff is suggesting a few things for the board to consider, including double overtime for sheriff deputies, chiropractor services, and lateral transfer incentives for correction deputies. So all of those will be open for discussion in an executive session next Tuesday. After that, review of the classification and compensation study and, and discussion about what the board's interests are in implementing that study or what are we gonna do with the study. A discussion about reclassifications in general and a proposal on how to move forward with reclassifications. And then if you want to talk about a thirty-two hour work week, this is an opportunity to also discuss that. We don't have the salary commission on this. That's been my understanding that based on the conversation in February, we'll bring that up again in April. But these are personnel topics, and I'm curious if there's anything else the board would like to discuss next week regarding personnel. If you think about something, let me know and I'll add it to the agenda. Then, in the time that remains, Jennifer Walker and the Public Works Team will give a history of the county's Parks Advisory Board. When we had one, what was the purpose of that board, what their contributions were, her understanding of why it was disbanded. And then an opportunity for the board to discuss how you'd like to move forward. If there's any interest in reconstituting the Parks Advisory Board. And then finally on this list is if the county were to launch some type of an arts and recreation program, what might that look like? So that's what we've got teed up for you for next week. And again, if there's anything that you would like added to this agenda, let me know. But we think that just with these items, it'll be a pretty full day.
Oh, yeah. It'll be fun, though. Those are good talks.
Could be a fun day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be ready.
Lots of coffee. Okay, and that's the proposed agenda for two twenty-sixth. And that brings us then to other Commissioner items. Commissioner Edwards?
I see today they're having a tour of the state property at eleven o'clock this morning.
Yes, the sheriff is.
If anybody's interested.
You can join in.
I'm thinking, I don't know if we need to. Yeah, we have to be less than a quorum, so I'm not, I don't have to go or anything. I'm just making that point that if somebody's interested in going. I don't know, I don't know who knew or where everybody got the information.
It's on my calendar. I was planning on going.
What, what time's it at?
Eleven.
I'm good.
More than.
I'm not gonna go.
One person once or ten, I guess we can just switch out, so.
I, I really, I'm, you know, I just kind of talked to Amy about it. She's like, I don't know when it's hitting the market. So like, I don't know if there's like secret knowledge that they have of something.
Um, let's, let's not talk about real estate in a public meeting since this was done.
Okay, anything else?
I've got a couple of issues that I'm just.
You got time, it's good, it's good to hear.
Where are we at now that the legislature is over on the whole sex offender thing, in case we get another shot across the bow like we did down the Tenino area? Anything new?
No, unfortunately, there were three pieces of legislation that we were tracking that did not get any traction during the legislative session. And one that actually Leah had spent a lot of time working with Representative Griffey's office in, in really crafting the language that was widely supported by folks. And for whatever reason, it just, it was mostly, as I understand it, the chair of that committee chose to not move it forward. Only one of them received a hearing and, and that was, I think, just a complimentary hearing and nothing else moved. So, but I'm hopeful that we can keep the body of that one proposed bill predominantly in, in shape and just have it reintroduced in the next session.
Anything yet to come from DSHS on any of those interactions and letters, you know, going back and forth? Anything new there?
Not that I've heard, no.
How about our parking ordinance on county roads for homeless vans?
So there isn't anything really that we have to adjust from a parking or an ordinance standpoint? Because they are, there's already a set amount of time that they follow for being able to tag those. The issue is really related to whether or not they're inhabited or not and figuring out what the path is there to connect individuals with services first. And then if they're not inhabited, going through the process of having them towed and then potentially, if they're not, if they're basically just junk vehicles, then the process of towing them and having them disposed of. What we need to do, and one thing that's on my to-do list, is trying to figure out the cost of doing that. Because the state is not fully funding tow companies, especially there is a limited number that actually have the right equipment to, to haul an RV and then be able to get reimbursed funding. There's not enough funding in that pipeline. So it may end up, if it is an issue that impacts the county, the need to have a conversation about what level of funding do we want to provide locally to support that.
I guess I'm hogging the show here.
No, go for it.
How, how about, are we, are we gonna be okay on tax titled properties about just putting together a policy? Asking the treasurer to post a notice on properties that come up for disposal?
I've been working with the treasurer on a process regarding tax title property. Currently, what we're doing is if the treasurer gets an offer, then I mean, a step back, all of our tax titled property is posted on our website.
Sure.
It's all out there. And we're working together with the treasurer, Central Services is working with the treasurer to identify neighbors of tax titled property and send out notices that we have these properties available. If anybody's interested, this is how to go about making an offer. Contact the treasurer. Then, if the treasurer gets a offer, they'll hold it for thirty days, is the proposal. And if they get any additional interest, then they'll go to auction. However, if there's only one response of interest to the property, then they'll go forward with bringing something to the board. That is the most efficient process that we could come up with that continues to attempt to have private owners purchase these properties and get them off the, or back onto the tax rolls. But that's what we've been working on.
So if you get a, I, I missed a little middle piece, I think the critical piece. So if you get an offer or interest, then you said you hold it for thirty days, and what happens in those thirty days?
If, if we get a second or more, if there are more than one offers within a thirty day period, then the treasurer will put the property back out for auction. And that's widely publicized. It's not only, a bidding is not available only to those people who expressed interest. But if we only get one person that's interested within thirty days, we'll go ahead and move forward with the sale agreement.
Commissioner Edwards had said about putting a posting up.
About posting what?
Putting a thirty day notice.
Putting up a notice that there's been, there's gonna be.
On the property, so the neighbors could see it, because when we send stuff out, we don't know who gets it.
And your thirty days has more meaning, because every one of its surrounding area will have had a good opportunity to see that. And then, then you go ahead and sell it in thirty days. That was Commissioner Edwards' idea.
Right.
Uh, we could look at doing that. That would not be something that the treasurer staff would do. That would be something that Central Services would do. So I can talk to my staff about how we might go about that.
I, I just think that pretty well covers it. I'm not so sure that the mailing even is necessary if we make the posting. Because we don't know, actually, a, a property could be in somebody else's name and it, it's not the people that live there, it's.
That's why it's taking time to figure out who to mail stuff to.
But I don't know if we need to do that if we post it. If we post it, everybody in the neighborhood knows.
I think that it's a very small, the, you know, the reason I like this mailing idea is it's a small cost and not a lot of work for central service staff to send something out. And we're trying to get rid of these properties.
Yeah, no, I'm not complaining about it. I, I agree with you. I'm just trying to make it the least amount of work we could and is most efficient. But if you think otherwise, that's.
We have absolutely minimized work on the treasurer staff. Central Services is picking this up because we're responsible for these properties. So that falls within my realm. We're also planning a work session. We don't have it on the books yet, but we've done quite a bit of analysis on not only tax titled property. We have a cool map to share with the board on where they're all at. But we also have done a good deal of work on property that the county owns that we're just not using, because perhaps you would either like to use the property for some purpose or sell it. So my staff are working on a work session on the properties that we're responsible for.
Thank you. Commissioner, items anywhere else?
Um, I guess just as an FYI, we've set up a meeting. I met with Senator Murray's staff person, let her know of our, what we're gonna be submitting this year. And I have a plan to reach out to both Grace Harbor and Mason County since they've demonstrated an interest in our juvenile jail and. and asked them for letters of support for our cameras. And Senator Murray's aide thought that was a great idea since there is specific funding right now set aside for cameras and, and it might, it helps that it would be supported regionally.
Where does that whole situation stand?
In terms of?
Juvenile jail in Grace Harbor County, that's my question.
We're trying to set up the meetings between, well, just between us and the judges and then moving forward with us and Grace Harbor. So we're still working on setting up those meetings.
Judge Kinder agreed to a meeting, and so it's just a matter of.
And one-on-one conversations that hasn't gone great, so.
So then what are, what, if one, what, what, what's the next phase of discussions then? Is it all of us with?
No, we haven't had, so we're trying to set a meeting up with the, Judge Kinder is the administrative judge for Superior Court in Thurston County. His counterpart in Grace Harbor County, anyone that they want to bring with them, Commissioner Mahia, a commissioner from Grace Harbor County. I will sit in, not sure if Grace Harbor County has county manager, but whoever my counterpart is from there and have a conversation about what may be possible. That is the next step.
Okay.
Our Superior Court is not enamored of the idea, quite frankly.
And it was because of?
Their main concerns that I'm aware of are programs for the juveniles who are justice-involved in both counties and also the, one of the best practices for youth, and I hope I don't get this wrong. The best practices for youth are to keep them, you hope that this justice involvement is the end of their justice involvement, right? And a best practice is to keep them tightly connected to their own community. So to take someone out of Grace Harbor County and have them in Thurston creates barriers to keep that connection.
And I've argued that's Grace Harbor's issue, not our issue. Sure, I mean, and I would say until you visit the Grace Harbor County juvenile facility, and it's not good. So any change is better for those.
But that's the discussion that needs to be had.
Issue, and then just whether it would be disruptive, whether, whatever Grace Harbor judges might order, is that going to, you know, that has to be respected because that's court order? And then is that somehow going to be disruptive to the more progressive practices and policies that are happening for Thurston County? When you're here, you have to use our programs and you have to, you know, sentence.
That's the, that is exactly the conversation that we need to start between the judges.
Yeah.
So.
I felt like, yeah, like that conversation could be facilitated and potentially overcome. It's a great conversation. Yeah, but it just hasn't gotten there.
And other counties are looking towards actually this model just because they cannot afford to keep a juvenile jail. So they're looking towards, especially in Eastern Washington, they're looking towards kind of having one county be the location and then transporting. I believe that there is already one in practice. I'm not sure which counties it is that they're, they have something shared.
Like I've brought up in the various meetings that I've had, like all these, you know, different questions about, you know, out, like this, outside contracting, producing revenue for your, for your department or your little, you know, fiefdom that you've got. And it's, it's weird that like every time anything gets brought up individually, it's instantly shot down across the board by all staff and directors and department heads. And it's like, it's a different mentality for me than I'm used to because, you know, when you don't have money and you've got to be scrappy and you're not used to being flush, you are willing to roll up your sleeves and go out and work for the money and find it. And I, I mean, it's like here, it's like it's almost been too easy for too many people for a long time, and the revenue discussion is new and, and people don't get it yet.
Well, but you know, it was different when we were hearing them, right, during when we were doing the cuts. And everyone was like, well, don't cut me, like, you know, I, I can't take any cuts. But then, when it, when it's time to have these revenue conversations, it's just, I, I'm, I'm also, like, everyone's like, no, we don't, you know, not us.
That's not our.
Yeah, and so it's, it's just, it's very frustrating at times because it's like, well, we're trying to mitigate those cuts in, in one way or another, and.
Yeah, at the jail, I brought up, why, why don't we have contracts with Department of Corrections for when they, you know, they bring people in out of the community and they house them for thirty days, fifteen days? And I know Grace Harbor County Jail makes a lot of money off of the state offering that up. And, you know, folks in jail are like, oh, no, 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 we don't, we don't need to do that. Hmm, sure about that?
Be scrappy.
Yeah.
That was it for me.
Well, I mean, and even like a little community like Tonino, like you, you have, you have to partner with a lot. You have to, you have to make sure you're covering your basic stuff, and that often means compromising a perfect model in order to partner, share and resources and all that. Just how we do our road stuff, working with the small South County communities and all that. All those systems are, it's a good perspective. And that's what Eastern Washington is a, is a, you know, analogy to that. Like they're small, they don't have the resources to build this, build that, self-contained. They're sharing things across different regional. Yeah, it's probably not perfect to have juveniles seventy-five miles away from their families. But, you know, if that's where, if you don't have the resources to have a jail in every single.
And I believe Grace Harbor, and part of it, they said they would be willing, just in conversations with Commissioner Pine, when the transportation piece came up, he was like, well, we would be willing to pay for families to, like, for transport for that. Because it's, again, for them, it's, their juvenile jail is in a very dire state, and they don't have the funding to maintain it or do the upgrades that are needed. And it's costing them a lot of money. And he, he said that there would actually just be savings with them having it in Thurston County and paying for transport, so.
All right.
More to come, but just as a heads up, I will be asking them for letters of support for our federal appropriation request.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
Are we just waiting on the lodging tax forty-five day, or forty-day timeframe that the RCW requires before we discuss that anymore?
It's my understanding that a proposal needs to go to the LTAC committee.
So we've been, we.
I thought we were doing something on a waiting period right now.
Correct. So we have crafted a communication vehicle to the LTAC members to get their feedback or input, potentially that two percent, additional two percent increase. That is, we were also, I think Jenica is going to partner with, because the RCW requires a certain amount of analysis. So trying to assist the committee members with that analysis of sort of what does it mean, being able to provide that information so they could actually provide meaningful feedback within those forty-five days. And then, once we have that communicated, then we'll have our timeline and can go from there.
If there's nothing else, we can adjourn until two P M.